We'll go ahead and start the work session and Ms. Garcia is going to present on the animal-related offenses. This will code.
Sure, thank you. Mayor and trustees Patty Garcia, town administrators. So there've been some lively discussions over the last several months about animal control and animal offenses and what our code says and the process and procedure that we're looking at. So at this meeting, what we are going to be asking of the trustees is to give us your ideas of what you would like us to look at. We're not looking, we only have 30 minutes tonight, so we're not looking to problem solve. We're not looking to take apart the code and figure out what needs to be changed, but what are your ideas? And what are the things that you would like for us to research? The plan is to take these, Cody will be scribing, so taking down those comments and those ideas. And then we'll be, we'll do the research, we'll then go out and get some public comment, get some ideas about these topics and ideas, and then bring it back to, for another work session. This will not happen overnight. This will take several months for us to get from this point to the point where we have an ordinance ready for adoption on this item. So I, for an example, I've heard from one group that they would like to have animals that are picked up by NOCO Humane Monday through Friday, between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to be dropped off at Tabby Road. So if that is something that would be of interest to you, then that would be one of those ideas that you would, you would provide to us, and we would start tracking those ideas and those comments. Again, not looking to problem solve tonight, not looking to, to look at the code and see what changes need to be made to the code, but to look at your ideas and what, what philosophically you would like to see for animal control, what you would like our code to look like, what are those topics that you think that we need to, to be researching? So I am, we are, we are here to listen.
All right, floor is ours. Um, trustee Teetz, do you have anything?
I do have a few things. So I guess one would be clarification, if you can direct an animal to be dropped off at a separate entity from NOCO Humane. Is that something that is?
If that is an idea you would like us to research, we will do that.
Okay.
If you could bring your microphone down so we can get you recorded. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I would say that one of the things I have on my list that was brought up at multiple meetings was the off-leash parks. If there was one or two that could be identified on the east and west side of town. That one was on my list. The, I'm more than happy to look into if we can drop animals off locally, if that's something that can be.
We, we will do that research for you.
Address. I would also like to know if, um, so is the beekeeping going to be enforced by NOCO Humane? Or is that still city?
I, that, Cody, is that us?
Just real quickly, not to try to problem solve it, but we would anticipate the beekeeping enforcement would be a town issue because it's not a time-sensitive related request that NOCO would do.
Thank you.
Okay, so NOCO won't be responding to the B section, so that'll be removed from the ordinance.
Well, it'll, it'll, it'll still be required. It'll be in our municipal code. It'll be enforced by our neighborhood services officer.
Got it. Um, the patrols was another thing that I would like to see addressed that had been discussed. If it is an option to have NOCO on call, but not actively controlling all of the Wellington streets picking up stray animals. And that's what I have for right now.
Okay, and, and you may think of things that we start booking some more.
And then one, I guess one clarification would be when you said the off-leash parks, did you mean like a fetch zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Like the fetch parks that they have in Berthardt.
Okay, perfect. Trustee Wiegand?
You kind of hit what I was talking about or thinking about. The fetch park, I think, is a huge one out there. You know, if we have two or three different parks around there that we can do that where they can be off-leash. I know that they had brought up about having dogs off-leash, walking besides, beside them, having the control being legal. Might be something where we want to look at, but they have to be under control. I don't know how you can stipulate that, specify that. But, uh, might be something to research.
Absolutely.
And having a drop-off point, you know, having that option here. And, you know, one thing too, I don't know if, and I know that Humane Society said that they always look as far as making sure one of the requirements is contacting people. If they've been, you know, if the animals are chipped or if they have other type identification. And if they don't get contacted, maybe they have to waiver their fees down there. So I don't know, have a good option on that because I know some people are very upset about just having their dog, you know, or other animal hauled away and never having that option. So we might want to look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend? Trustee Wiegand or Mason?
Uh, yeah, I think, I don't know how I confused you two. Well, you know, I think most of the boards in agreement on the, uh, fetch parks and that sort of thing. The only concern I might have about the Tabby Road drop-off point is certainly I think Dr. Zadina would probably want to know that, you know, if we're going to drop them off there, if there's a certain time restriction that they will be there for. And then if we have to have NOCO Humane pick them up if they're not picked up from Tabby Road. So a little bit of coordination there and then obviously communication with residents as far as this is where you would go to pick up your pet if, if it was to be lost.
I'll just bring it, I'll just point order real quick. We're just good to give ideas and then they'll research it.
Yep. Yeah, otherwise I think that's, that's the crux of it, so.
Yep, great points.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Daly?
Uh, there were several themes when we did our community outreach for this. And when I had organized them, the, the biggest one was just really defining process and procedure. So we've talked about that a bunch of, you know, how exactly are they going to operate? And what that enforced, it was mostly related to enforcement, right? So people were really worried about enforcement from that perspective. So, um, understanding that was one of them. The other one, they're talking about dogs being at large, but good dogs being at large, right? So I see both sides of that, you know, we just had a dog attack a man in his front yard. That was large, at large. Meanwhile, you know, I've caught several dogs at large and they were sweet, but kind of timid. So you never really know what's going to happen. You don't know when you look at a dog if it's going to be friendly or not, right? So, um, the, the ideas that were brought up earlier, definitely want to pursue those for sure. But maybe part of that understanding is if someone were to violate the dog at large, like what's the warning look like? Or is it actually a dangerous situation? So like if they can be classified into different categories of, you know, there was danger related to it or it's, you know, offense blew over. So I don't know how you would put that into code to say it was not dangerous. I, and again, that's exactly what I said, you don't know if it's dangerous or not.
Yeah.
But that was the, the whole concern that keeps coming up is, well, my dog's safe, so it shouldn't be enforced. Well, how do we know if the situation's safe or not? So I'd like to see if there's a way that that's ever considered or how that might be. The right, the drop-off, we talked about that already. And then other things related to contract for oversight. And then I guess just talking about the whole fine amounts, those kind of items were the other concerns I got.
Thank you.
Those are most of the things I saw when I was reviewing it.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
So apologize for running a minute behind there. Just so I'm on the same page, are we going through the policy portion? Are we talking about the public input portion?
So what we're, yeah, yeah. Basically, we're giving town staff the direction or ideas to pursue, to address the ordinance in the future, but things to take from us, then take to the community and then see if they can actually make them functional.
So we're talking about the policy side?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, are we going to circle back to community input and what that should look like? Because that was the two things. We had the policy and then what can we, should I do both or just the policy?
I would do policy first.
Okay, perfect. Um, on the policy side, actually, I agree completely with trustee Daly. We need to have clarity around animal at large because there's a big difference because we've had a case in the past where someone was cited for animal at large, literally walking their dog from their front door to the car without a leash. Never left their property. Technically, that's considered animal at large. It's literally on their property, but it was not on a leash. It was going from the house to the car. So figuring out a way to define that, because there's a big difference between that and the dog is just roaming the streets. So if we can find some way to define animal at large, same thing, there's a big difference between an animal walking next to someone in the park, playing fetch with them in the park versus by themselves out in the street. So I don't know if we can maybe define that or break those apart, even if we still want to have something that says you need to have the animal on a leash. Maybe we separate that out from animal at large if it can be considered within your control. And maybe there's a separate fine structure, things like that. Because I agree, the hard part with an animal by itself, you have no idea, are they safe? Are they the one that's going to attack someone or are they not? Um, I think one of the big things that we need to take in mind, this was brought up when we had this, is service animals. Do we have an ordinance that deals with that separately from how normal animals are dealt with? That was something that was brought up at the last meeting as well. Do we need to call it out in the code when we're rewriting that to say that there's different stipulations around how that works? Because there could be multiple reasons. I think one of the examples that was brought up, a service animal could be by itself because trying to get help for someone who's injured or can't get up. So I think those are a couple of areas. As far as drop-off points, things like that, I think that's really not, I don't know if that's code-specific. I know one of the things that was talked about is we kind of set the rules or how we want NOCO Humane to operate. I think a great idea would be putting together some kind of a manual or rulebook or, hey, within the town of Wellington, this is what our expectations are when you're going through that. So those are my thoughts on the policy side.
Thank you. Community input, how do we want to go about collecting that direction for town staff? Start with trustee Teetz.
I think a survey is good, but I would like the survey to be able to be open for additional comments. I know that even with our survey related to the strategic plan, it was noted that it was limited, but it was great that it was open. So definitely having areas where you could put least important when it comes to what they're worried about and most important when it comes to what they're worried about with animal control. I think that'll help guide some of these decisions because maybe what we feel is super important might not be something that we need to waste a lot of time on because the residents don't feel it is. I know that the, there is other options when it comes to putting items at the dog parks to gather additional information, whether that be the QR code or items like that. Communication with our vets and having those options available at the veterinarian's office. But also where people go most, so your supermarkets, gas stations. They have community boards where you can put a QR code on their board and ask for additional feedback. So something like that would be wonderful. I know having a meeting where people can come and attend straps, you guys possibly for time and availability of the Leaper Center to be able to have that. So I would say the next best option would be a community outreach survey related to it.
So I heard from you that maybe like a ranking matrix of what's, okay, along with open-ended questions. Thank you.
Trustee Wiegand?
I agree with her on that. And I would actually, before we make any final decisions, you know, possibly have a town hall come in or at least have a discussion with the, within the people, kind of giving them a rough idea of what we're looking at, then getting the input from the people on it at that point.
And that, that's our hope. We, when we come back for the work session with the Board of Trustees, we're hoping that we've taken these items that you've talked about, those ideas. We've done the research. We've then pitched it to the local veterinarians, those who are interested. And we can, we'll probably do some sort of meeting here at, at the Leaper. I mean, just for interested parties, people, some people like to be in person and like to talk those things through. And then be able to bring something to the Board of Trustees as far as this is what we found. These are the ideas and this is what the community is supporting at this time. Great ideas so far. I look forward to hearing more.
I, I agree, great ideas. I think staff did a great job with the last survey. Maybe just a, a ranking system would be, would be good. Otherwise, um, yeah, great, great ideas so far.
The only thing above and beyond that potentially is a, a steering committee. There's obviously been community members who have been really, really engaged already at this point and who maybe have done some research on their own. So potentially having, um, a steering committee and, and I mean, thinking, that's hard though because we don't have time to do like entire roundtable or something necessarily on maybe this topic. But I think it would be great to have, uh, you know, those leaders in the community who are stepping up to want to participate in this process be like right there with it. So I might recommend that.
And I am in contact with a specific group that have, that has been pretty vocal here. And our, and they, they are the ones that brought up the idea for the dropping off, dropping off animals at Tabby Road. And they, they thought that, they, they even drafted an ordinance, like ordinance language, you know, that, to leave it open-ended to where. But then there would be, they would thought potentially a resolution identifying where that location was. So I am, I am in contact with them and working with them, so.
Self-made steering committee. I like it.
Yes, and that, that works, that works great.
Yes, thank you guys for being so active.
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Um, I think the ideas with the survey are good. Um, I like the idea of a steering committee or even a roundtable. It doesn't need to be the long, months-long roundtable, um, but that's worked well with water and wastewater. Being able to capture community input and it could be made up of members that have already expressed interest or if there's others who want to reach out to the board, I think that's a great way to do it. I, I think that's a good way to have a, whether we go the steering committee route or the roundtable, having a dedicated group of people that are saying, okay, we're gauging at a higher level on this. They can each gather input from their sphere and then bring ideas back to us. So then that can inform, whether we do a town hall, love that idea. Again, the hard part about when we do it in a public meeting, right, people can come up, they have three minutes to talk to us, but we don't talk back, right? There's no conversation. Um, so I think having a meeting where we can actually have some of that conversation is a great idea. So, um, yeah, whether we go the route of steering committee or roundtable, I think the roundtables have worked well with water and sewer. So I like that idea, but either way, it works well for me.
I don't have anything to add. Um, anything else before we end the work session? No? Okay, you got what you need.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
You want to scroll back up? There we go. Thank you, Cody. So Board of Trustee topics, so alternate impoundment locations, practices for contacting owners, timing considerations for local operator, feasibility of off-leash parks or fetch zones, patrol practices, clear process and procedures, including enforcement, animal at large, fine amounts and applicability, service animals and operating procedures, which would be Wellington-specific. Is there anything else you all would like to add?
I do have one additional thing and I don't know how this goes when licensing animals. Is there an option online to license your animals through NOCO Humane or do you have to license in person?
I don't know. I'll have to look.
Okay, so in having a secondary option, if someone wants to choose to do it local, if that's like at the vet's office or items like that, even if you don't utilize that vet, can you still go in and get a license from them?
Okay, we'll take a look, see. Thank you. Great idea.
Okay.
They are available? Thank you. To make it permissible. Excellent. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick little recess before the meeting?
Thanks, guys, for all your ideas. Those were great.
Thank you. All right, I now call to order the March 26, 2024 regular meeting, time being 6:29 p.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Mayor Pretend McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
I do. I would like to move Resolution 14-2024 from the consent agenda to action items to open up for comment.
Okay. Uh, we would recommend you consider that item as.
As E3? Okay, um, and then it has been brought to my attention that Mr. Sapienza would like us to hold an executive session. Mr. Clerk, could you read the title of that said executive session?
Executive session for the purpose of conferences with an attorney for the town pursuant to 24-6-4024B CRS for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a complaint lodged against the town attorney for an opinion rendered to the town of Wellington. The executive session will not be recorded and an attorney certification will be provided as required by CRS 2464022D52B that the discussion, that discussions in the executive session constitute privileged attorney-client communications.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pretend McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Teetz?
No.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
With a vote of five in favor, two against, uh, two-thirds majority, excuse me, two-thirds of the board being required for an affirmative, for a passage of the motion, the motion passes.
Thank you. Now, uh, I will close the regular meeting, time being 6:32 p.m. and we will open the executive session, time being 6:32 p.m. Members of public will be asked to leave the room during the duration of the executive session. Virtual attendees, please note that the live stream will be discontinued until the executive session has concluded. I will, uh, now, um, while we close the executive session, now I will reopen the regular meeting, um, time being 6:43 p.m. Uh, Mr. Clerk, take a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Pretend McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you. We still have a quorum.
Thank you. Next thing, are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. Now we'll move on to public comment. Members in public wishing to comment on non-agenda items, please sign at the sheet behind the podium. State your name for the record. You each be given three minutes to speak. At this time, I'd also like to reiterate the fact that I would like us to respect one another. If there's any noise made in the crowd during public comment, uh, one warning will be given. Uh, if there's a need for a second warning, pull you aside, have a conversation and it might be recourse of removal at that time. So please keep that in mind and be respectful of one another.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, town staff, um, fellow residents. Um, I brought my husband up with me because I might need more than three minutes because this is really important and I might get a little emotional. So I'm Lisa Chalet. I live at 7424 Homestretch Drive here in Wellington. Been a Wellington resident for nearly seven years. Um, I would just like to start with, I serve this town in many capacities. I'm a planning commissioner. I am the executive director and chair of Safe Routes to School Wellington, Colorado, a nonprofit. I also serve this community as a planning commissioner for the county of, Laramie County and as a Board of Adjustments member for Laramie County. I struggle with my words and my approach and my message as I anticipated speaking to you all tonight. Typically, I'm pretty confident in my ability to articulate my ideas, my beliefs and my feelings. The last couple of weeks have stripped much of that away from me. I want to begin with a simple quote. It may be one that's very familiar to some of you. It's one that I learned at a very young age. Love is patient, love is kind, does not envy, does not boast, is not proud. It does not dishonor others. It is not self-seeking. It is not easily angered. It keeps no record of wrongs. For those that want to know, that is a quote from the Bible, 1 Corinthians 13, 4 and 5. I'm here to say my piece, ask you for accountability, and then I'll continue to serve this community as I have for the last two years. And I believe that has been with honor and integrity and with a heart for every single resident in this community, regardless of whether or not they agree with me. It should be no surprise to any of you that this election cycle has been contentious, vitriolic and anything but kind. As a non-candidate, it has been sad to watch neighbors, friends and our community descend into a nastiness that I didn't believe existed in this town. It became personal 12 days ago. Up until then, I believed I had a respectful relationship with each of you, if not a friendship with some. That is not to say we agreed on every issue, local or otherwise. Anyone that's ever seen me and Brian Mason talk about anything other than local politics would think we hated each other and we're our good friends. We didn't need to. I've worked with most of you on an issue or two for the town of Wellington, whether it be Safe Routes to School, something with Pooter School District, something with the fire department, or just a kind ear when I needed it or you needed it. But 12 days ago, I was falsely accused by trustee Teetz of being the adult potato, which she is often accused of a myriad of violations of the law. Not here to discuss whether or not that's true. If that wasn't enough, many of her followers' friends began harassing me online tonight.
Tim Talbot, Wellington Town, like give her my three minutes.
Many of her followers and friends began harassing me online despite a respectful conversation between her and I and my insistence that I have nothing to do with that and no involvement in it. Her behavior towards members of this community that don't pass her purity test is unacceptable. It is okay to have different views and it's okay to have different beliefs. As she and I have demonstrated for the last 10 years of friendship, it is not okay to verbally attack citizens based on her perceived belief that if they are friends with trustee Daly or others that she has had issues with, she has opened the door to online harassment of anyone she believes supports, quote, "the majority and not the minority", which is her description of this board. It is very reminiscent of the McCarthy era, in my opinion. It has created real fear of retribution in this town. I fear it. I worry Safe Routes to School will pay a price for me speaking out tonight, but I am taking that chance. But others are afraid to show their support for their candidates of choice for fear the other side, either side, will retaliate. This is a form of voter suppression and voter intimidation and it is against the law. It is unacceptable. It is particularly disturbing when it comes from an elected official we should be able to trust. I will also add that Christine Gator, a member of the town's finance committee, added to the harassment and accusations of me. She attempted to humiliate me by accusing me of being the adult potato, mocked something they had said, quote, "character matters", and posted a very publicly available snippet of a news article from 2022 that talks about my past struggles and transgressions with the law. A past that I have been accountable for and overcome that were born out of domestic violence and abuse and the mental health issues that come with it. Those struggles nearly cost me my life, literally. I have spent nearly 20 years rebuilding and overcoming something most do not. So imagine how it felt to have an elected official, albeit a different government entity, the wife of a sitting trustee and a board member of this town on the finance committee, attack me in such a personal and traumatic way. Hope you cannot imagine how it felt. It was like being right back in the middle of the abuse I fought so hard to get away from for so many years. I say all this to you tonight because words matter, actions matter and inaction matters. I will likely leave here without an apology or any accountability from you, my representatives. But more importantly, the behavior by sitting trustees in this town has reached far beyond the boundaries, is known by those who want to help us improve the financial burden of our water infrastructure debt. They are now hesitating because of the way we carry ourselves here. You are the leaders of this town. You are what others believe us to be because you are our representatives. You are failing. I beg of you to think about that moving forward. Thank you. You are failing. I beg of you to think about that moving forward. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Karen Eifert, and I live in the Knowles. And I'm really upset that Lisa feels so upset. I'm really sorry for you, Lisa. That's not a good way to feel, and I know what that's like. I would like to say also that everything that's been happening online, seriously, can y'all just act like your dogs' age? Is that what you want to hear? Because that's what's happening. Everybody's acting like they're dogs' age. They're not acting like grown-up trustees. I just really want to see this town come back together. Nobody needs to attack anybody. And I have PTSD, and sure, some of the crap that gets said ticks me off to no end. Some of the bad things that are said about my friends and my friends' family, those things really tick me off, too. But you don't see me out there trying to cut everybody off at the knees just because I got offended to something. I even was talking to a member here. I was talking to Christine Gator in the hallway here. She's telling me a story about her husband skiing. And then we were talking about some different topics. And I hear from outside, Karen's in there mad-dogging me. Really? How can I be mad-dogging you when I'm looking somebody else in the face? Seriously, town of Wellington, what the heck? When is it going to stop? When are people going to act their age? When are people going to show these children how government should be run? Not only that, but the adults that are interacting online is just as bad. Everybody calls for no bullying. Everybody calls for no this and no that. Well, if the pot's calling the kettle black, guess where the kids are learning it? I'm sick and tired of everybody always saying, "I'm the victim. I'm the victim. I'm the victim." It's not always everyone else is the victim. Sometimes you have to take the responsibility, too. Trust me, I have a kid, 14, going on 15, and I want to wring my own neck out because I catch myself arguing with him, and I'm like, you know what? I'm the mom. What am I doing? Wellington, for heaven's sakes, you're the adult. Grow up.
Laurie Moyer, Harrison Avenue. I've been away for a little while, and I had the opportunity kind of observe from afar what's been going on. And I think accountability is the key. Thank you, Lisa, for your bravery in speaking up. I know more people feel the same way that you do. I've seen attack after attack after attack, and I think that we really need to remember. The same respect that we're demanding for ourselves, we need to give to other people. There is goodness in this town. There is so much positivity and hope and love, and we need to remember that. And we need to remember that people that are putting themselves out there to be your next trustees as candidates are doing that out of love and care for the town. They don't deserve to be attacked. Neither do residents. We all have our past and our mistakes. We take accountability for that, and we need to make the choice every day to work together because this is where we live. This is where our children live. And yes, Karen, our children are watching us. But if we're going to call people out and ask them not to treat others a certain way, we need to really dig deep and look at the way we are treating people. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment. Mr. Clerk, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Will you please read the title of the item in the consent agenda?
D1, 0312, 24 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Prette McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will proceed on to action items. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E1?
Resolution number 13-2024, a resolution of the town of Wellington, excuse me, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the town of Wellington, Colorado, establishing hours and days for outdoor watering.
Thank you. Ms. Megan Smith, the deputy director of Public Works, will present this item. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Megan Smith, deputy director of Public Works. You have before you this evening a resolution for proposed watering restrictions for the irrigation season of 2024. I also included or provided some hard copy handouts of both, of two items that Mr. Moose, the town clerk, will amend the packet with after this meeting this evening. It includes the slideshow presentation that I have on the screen right now, as well as the monthly utility report for reference, as it could be applicable for this conversation. So the resolution you have before you does tie into two specific strategic plan goals, both outlined here, both related to infrastructure, ensuring current and future water resources and the wise use of treated drinking water, as well as completing the water treatment and wastewater treatment facilities, expansion projects on time and on budget. So just a little bit of background, most of which you're all familiar with, but for those at home who may not be, the town does use approximately, excuse me, approximately half of our residential customers do use potable water for irrigation or treated drinking water for irrigation. Irrigation demand in an average year can typically be more than half of the demand during those peak irrigation months of June through September. And just as a reminder, we are undergoing a significant plant expansion effort. We are nearing the finish line, though it's not right outside our door yet. But that expansion will bring our treated water capacity from a current of 2.4 million gallons per day to a capacity of 4.6 million gallons per day. So I did include in the slideshow a snippet that's also included in your utility report this evening, and it is just our historical water production that you see on a monthly basis. This just does kind of illustrate that historical demand. So 2023, perhaps notwithstanding, you can see on those lines kind of that winter average hovers about 20 million gallons a month. You can see there in June, July, August, September, those demands double, more than double typically. Last year was a very, very wet year, definitely the exception, not the rule. But, and then, of course, oh, excuse me, and then, of course, 2020 being that even more outlier, which kind of really prompted the pressing need for that treatment plant expansion project, for sure, though it was in the books long before then. So there are some operational considerations and risks are the largest part as to why we're bringing a resolution for you to consider watering restrictions again this year. We do have a couple of concurrent projects that are going on at the water treatment site. Of course, we have our large expansion effort. In parallel with that, we are recoding and rehabilitating both of our potable water storage tanks. We have a 2 million gallon tank and a 1 million gallon tank. We've completed the interior rehab portion of the 2 million gallon tank, and that tank is back online and serving the community. We now currently have offline our 1 million gallon tank for the interior recoding rehab of that effort. So that provides, creates some additional operational constraints. There's, when we talk about concurrent projects and complicating operations, we have ongoing tie-ins that are taking place from the existing facility to the new facility. Those tie-ins do necessitate bringing the plant out of service for production or decreasing the production capacity. So those tie-ins and those construction efforts do result in times with some really constrained production capacity, if not a zero production capacity for, you know, a couple of days at a time. When you combine that with limited potable water storage, it kind of amplifies our operational constraints navigating through those times. We are very quickly nearing the finish line, but as dictated in the utility report, our expected substantial completion date is the end of May for that water treatment facility with final completion in August. So we are close and just not quite there yet. There are some additional benefits to the way that the town has historically structured our watering restrictions with kind of limiting to certain days for certain customers and limiting those times to the overnight hours. That creates some predictability and when we expect those demands, which allows us to anticipate those operational modifications that could be needed to meet those increased demands on those days. And it allows us some time in between, right? Because restrictions, it's Sundays and Mondays and Wednesdays and Thursdays, I think. I could have that off. I'm sorry. It's in your packet. I apologize. But there's a couple of days in between where we can recover increased production to bring up storage levels in our tanks. There are risks that we're facing, of course, as a result of those operational constraints. We do run the risk of not being able to meet peak daily demand on a given day. I do have the last few years' worth of our peak day that we had seen. You can see there in 2020, of course, that was a bit of an outlier for us, but we did exceed that current capacity of treatment. And the way we're able to navigate through that is that we do have, you know, 3 million gallons of potable water storage that helps us to meet those demands when production can't keep up all the way. Right now, we're operating at two-thirds of that storage, so that's just another limiting factor. And we do run the risk of kind of stressing this aged facility that we're working really hard to replace. A lot of this infrastructure has been, is the same infrastructure that's been there since 1984, 83, 84, when the original plant was completed. We have seen failures in the past of just, as we're kind of trying to limp things along with the most cost-effective solution until we get to the finish line with this facility. The more we stress that and that aging equipment, it just increases our risks for infrastructure failures, equipment failure. We do have, I did list some recommendations in the packet this evening. I do understand that historically, we have brought this to you. Last year, we did bring in a couple of work sessions and just discussed a few topic items related to it. We are bringing this forward a bit earlier than in previous years with hopes that we are able to kind of kick off our informational campaign with enough time to ensure that folks are perhaps not kicking off their irrigation seasons too, or, excuse me, their irrigation systems too early, that we can contain that irrigation startup to May and not coming too early in April, and that we're able to really push out that information in our current need. We do have high hopes that I hesitate to commit to because Bob will come from the back of the room, that we will be able to bring forward the ability to lift restrictions as we successfully complete the project and start up, both completion and start up, increasing that capacity to levels that we can, are confident we can manage the demands at that time. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on this resolution.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I don't have any questions at this time. I do want to commend you guys on, obviously, we are getting very close to the finish line on this and very exciting as far as that goes. Obviously, I do support the resolution. I would like to see this come back sometime midsummer, if possible, once we start bringing things to capacity. If we can lift restrictions, I think we should do that. So I would just ask that staff maybe bring this back at some point, but otherwise, I would support this at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
The watering restrictions essentially is a way for everybody to be good neighbors to each other. If for any reason we were to go beyond that limit or anything like that, you know, anybody who maybe not acting responsibly would put the entire town at risk or, you know, a majority of people doing this kind of thing. So watering restrictions really just help you to coordinate being neighborly and caring for your community to make sure that our water resources are available for everybody. And if they weren't, that would be a matter of major public safety. So based on that and knowing the risks, and I think you outlined it really well, especially with the capacity of storage, I'm really glad that you brought that to our attention because that's above and beyond maybe other considerations that we've had in the past, which are all amazing things, getting us to where we need to be. So that's great news, but it just is another reminder that we're not in the clear yet. So I appreciate how you presented that and the storage concerns. Thank you. I have no questions.
Trustee Gator?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. I'm glad to hear the internal on the 2 million gallon tank is done. When are we scheduled to have the 1 million gallon tank internal coating done?
End of April, beginning of May.
End of April, beginning of May. And then, when we're working on the exterior of the tank, do we have to shut them off for any reason? Is it only for the internal portion?
Exactly.
So end of April, beginning of May, both tanks will be back up and running?
That's the...
That's the goal, assuming construction goes how construction?
Exactly.
Okay. With the days to low to no production, do we have a schedule right now with the construction as to when we're going to have those days out?
We do. Generally speaking, we do. That can change. So we have, you know, we have a construction meeting weekly. We do a three-week lookout at that construction meeting. Those three-week lookouts, some dates do change.
Okay.
But yes, it's not a surprise.
Okay. So my understanding is when we get to those days, well, if we have to have the plant not running, we're basically running off the 3 million gallons or so that's in the tanks. That's what provides everything.
Exactly.
Have we been in conversations with the fire district about this? Because I know if, would probably be good for them to know, there may not be good water pressure because I know a lot of their pressure depends on how much water's in those tanks.
It does, and they do. We are in contact with them, especially when we're in situations where we're not producing.
Okay, perfect. And then, do we have specific pieces of equipment that we're concerned about failing at the moment that... Because I think you brought up, we're concerned about things failing with just being put over at. Are there specific pieces of equipment that are bringing up those concerns?
We recently had an issue with a couple of PLCs. There was actually, there's a CIP or a capital improvement project that's planned for this year, and it is related to one of those. There was a programmable logic controller that had failed. It didn't, and it didn't limit our ability to produce water, but it limited our ability to watch it on the overnight. And so we brought the plant down for the overnight because we want to have eyes on every, the whole treatment process. So that is one case. We do have a project in place to be able to kick that off this year, the replacement of those. That's the only one I can think of off the top of my head. There's nothing specific. So if there were specific things that we knew were going to put us at heightened risk, we would mitigate that as best we could.
Okay, so it's just more of a general concern, not a specific, this piece of equipment is, we can see that it's right on the edge. It's just generally, it's a concern, something could go out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the increased pressure of operating the facility at its maximum capacity.
Okay. How many days did we hit max capacity in 2023? I know you had the one in here of, was that the only day? Did we have more than one?
I know that was our, our peak.
That was the highest?
In 2022.
Okay. And what's our normal operating capacity per day?
Generally, we're operating in the summertime at about 1.8 MGD is a sweet spot where everyone is very comfortable at the ability of the plant to keep up with the demand. The demand on the plant, not the treatment demand, but the actual just stress on the plant and the infrastructure.
So about 1.8. And then, so we didn't pass it last year, but the other years were like 2.2. How many days have we been hitting that? Like, if you look back at '22, because I know that was not as wet as '23, but it was a wet year. How many days did we exceed that 1.8?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get it back to you.
Okay, those are the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
Thank you for this. I love the maps and graphs. It's extremely assistant to someone who is a visual learner. So my thing comes from, I want to verify that we're also going to be posting the outdoor signage for each of the subdivisions where it states watering restrictions. I just wanted to verify that that was still...
Yeah, we will post signage as we have in years past, especially for those homeowners associations or outdoor irrigation that's using potable water.
Perfect. Do we see an issue with water revenues coming in when we have these restrictions in place? Because I know we're, it's like a very, very delicate balancing act compared to being negative in our water revenue fund because our revenues come from residents and then issuing water restrictions where we're not getting the same amount of revenue if people are minding their water usage. Is there anything that flags you guys if you start seeing numbers, like revenue numbers, drop?
We monitor that monthly, so you'll see that in your packet this evening, as well as the January Treasurers Report that reports on the amount of water sales for the month. There is, like you said, it's a fine line, and, but fundamentally, ensuring that we can produce drinking water for the town trumps the desire to bring in revenue. I know that sounds, but that's fundamentally our primary priority. So, and unfortunately, 2023, with the institution of the new water rate structure, also fell in the same year as a really wet year. So the difficulty of parsing out the impact of those reduced demands... also fell in the same year as a really wet year. So the difficulty of parsing out the impact of those reduced demands from the wet year between wet year and rate structure is difficult. I have done some outreach to some of our regional partners, regional community nearby, so see Fort Collins, Windsor, Fort Collins Loveland Water District, just to test the waters on what they saw as far as reduced demands. And they saw anywhere from about 16 to 18% in reduced demands from last year, which we saw about 20%. So I think I think there was an impact, there is an impact of the new rate structure on reducing water consumption. Not to the scale of the impact of the wet year, though. That did overshadow that, those reductions.
Perfect. My other thing is, is I'm at this time support of the watering restrictions mainly because of everything you listed, but also the understanding that we have to think about water treatment as well as the wastewater plant. When we know that water treatment plant will be done in August, but our wastewater plant is not slotted until latter October, correct? So if we remove those restrictions and open the floodgates for more processed water coming through, what is the risk of our treatment plant not being able to process if we do open the floodgate and remove watering restrictions?
Well, these watering restrictions are specific to outdoor only, so we don't do any indoor watering restrictions at this time.
Got it. Right.
So it shouldn't, it shouldn't impact it. That water is not going to the wastewater facility, it's going into the ground.
Okay, so there's no chance of throwing the processing plant?
Should not.
Okay, perfect. Those are my only questions.
Thank you. Trusty Wiegand.
First off, I hate mandatory restrictions with a passion, but I understand why we got to do it. There's definitely a lot of limitations that we're going through right at the moment. One thing that I do not, I wish we could confront with our ordinances and stuff, I guess that the HOAs are restricted and how they can enforce some of the watering, you know, like keeping a healthy lawn, being able to get to backyards where you got, you know, 25 foot weeds back there, you know? I would love to see the HOAs to still be able to have a little bit of teeth in their ordinances there. So, you know, they can keep the HOAs maintained in a good, proper way. That would be one of my big concerns. Got a question, though. I have heard, and I could be way off base in my thinking on here, but Big Thompson Water, they got a problem, I guess, up at Carter Lake and Horse Tooth as far as their capacity. They may be getting their pumps going by April, but they're not sure. Is that going to affect us? Is that going to affect our availability to the water? And that's another reason that we should probably be thinking about having some type of restrictions in.
I'm not aware of the of the concern that you're bringing up, so I don't know if I can speak to it directly.
I know Carter Lake is like 65% full right now. And they don't know if they're going to be pumping. The person I know up there, which you know him too, he has been told that it could be a pump problem or just a mechanical problem or something up there. So they're not real sure exactly if that's even going to be solved this year. So would that affect us in our availability of water?
So the way our current raw water comes to us is through an agreement that's essentially makes it a firm supply. So North Pooter Irrigation Company is obligated to provide us up to 2,000 acre feet in a season at this time. So they would have to figure that out. And we would work with them, of course, if there were limitations, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of the concern. I know right now, usually, right now would be the time of year that both Horse Tooth and Carter Lake would be would be down in order to capture runoff. As the snow melts will bring, and usually they're at their fullest in June. So but I'm not aware of the pumping concern up there. But I can follow up on that.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. Perfect. Yeah, I'm for water restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Sounds like we're getting close to the finish line on some really big water project. So that's really exciting. Thank you for putting together the presentation. It was very thoughtful and detailed information.
Thank you very much for that information. And yeah. Let's make this the last year we got to do it. All right, now I will open this up for public comment on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name is Ed Cannon. Seven year resident of Wellington. You know, when we did the water efficiency plan back in 2018, one of the things we wanted to do was find a way to reduce the water usage in the town. And I appreciate the work that's being done at the water treatment plant and the wastewater plant. Of course, we'll have more capacity. North Pooter has an agreement to give us as much water up to 2,000 acre feet, which would last us quite a long time. I'm going to ask that the board would maybe consider rewriting our code about when when we can water lawns and when we can't. Instead of water restrictions, we've been under water restrictions for the past four years. You know, Colorado is in a new era of airidification. We have wildfires, which is reducing the amount of water that can soak into the ground and we're getting flash floods. So there's less water that's coming into our system. And even with increased capacity at a water treatment plant and the fact that half of our homes are using potable water, including mine, for water, at the current cost, it's pretty expensive to to irrigate your lawn with potable water. So a permanent irrigation schedule. Other towns have done this with competitive water efficiency plans. Greeley is a good example as well of communities that have said, okay, we value our water. We want to make sure that we're using water effectively and efficiently, and that we're not wasting water. And they have written into their into their code tighter controls over when you can actually irrigate. Because even with the new water treatment plant having added capacity, we still have the North Pooter cost every year for the water that we use. The more acre feet of water that we use is the more cost to the town and therefore to the rate players. Is that a treatment cost to treat the potable water? And quite frankly, since we're in this new era, I call it a new normal in Colorado, perhaps we should start thinking about what those watering restrictions to do should be looked like on a yearly basis. And even Greeley still has emergency measures that can kick in when there's a water shortage. But a little bit tighter control would help us to save money, help us to save water, help us to save utility bills cost to the to the residents as well. So I appreciate the water restrictions for this year. My lawn looks just fine, even with the watering restrictions. So I'm not too worried about that. But I would like for the board to consider maybe a change to the ordinance so that we can put in a little bit more firmer controls over water usage in the summertime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eden Fooks, Tim Whitehouse, Grand Avenue. I've been involved in water, both formally and informally in this area about the last four years. Done a lot of reading and studying. I am supportive of what currently calling watering restrictions. I'm aware that the new plant will bring on additional capacities, but as Mr. Cannon suggested, we are at a period of airidification here. It is going to be hotter. There's going to be more precipitation at less frequent times, which we may not be able to capture. So even with the additional capacities, I do not believe that removing control or restrictions is a good idea. I mean, Kentucky bluegrass sod does not grow out here. What grows out here is you drive down the Nun Road and you look at those fields that aren't irrigated and it's got scrub. If you look at aerial photograph of this area, anything that is green around Fort Collins is a result of over 150 years of irrigation projects worth millions and millions of dollars. I mean, Colorado is described in the 1880s as the great American desert because nothing could grow out here. They're like, you can't grow crops. Well, you can because they've spent years and millions of dollars doing it. So while we will have additional treatment capacity, what we don't have is additional resources or additional water. And that is one of the problems with where Wellington is located relative to Greeley, Loveland, they're all further down the watershed from Cheyenne, from the state line. It runs south and we are at the northern area of that, which means we have fairly limited number of options where we can get our water from. Should we look for another water source? Yes, the town has been doing that since 2018 that I'm aware of. So it's an ongoing thing, but I definitely would suggest that I know people don't like watering restrictions, but it's such a valuable resource. And again, there's two proposals for the Colorado Basin right now, one being pushed by California and one by the Upper Basin. And if they can't resolve that, the federal government's going to get involved because it's like, oh, we have a little more water this year, but it is not. I don't think it's coming back the way it was. So again, I think it's an important subject here discussing. I don't know what the solution is, but yeah, there's a lot here. I mean, and water is life out here. We don't have a lot of it. Actually, no one does unless you're Greeley. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Eifert, live in the Nels. I'd just like to ask the board to let us know when they'll be making the decision for restrictions or not for sure. I don't know if that's going to happen this session or not, but the sooner we can find out, the sooner people can plan. So that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board on this item?
I am grateful for you bringing this to us ahead of time. As it was just mentioned by Ms. Eifert, that it would be good to get this notification out sooner rather than later. So thank you very much.
Trusty Wiegand. Trusty Daly.
I just hope that people kind of see this and accept this as just a great guideline in how to be a good neighbor. So rather than the concern of, don't tell me what to do, it's a, how can I be a better neighbor to my wonderful small town friends? So and I think that's why it's necessary, just so people know how and what to do to be that good neighbor.
Trusty Gator.
So I guess my final comments, I appreciate the information. So thank you for sharing that. I understand the concerns with the storage tanks being out of commission, but those should be back in commission, really, April and May is when we start to see that. So those should be back into commission. If we can maybe work to that, if we had specific pieces of equipment that we like, we know this is specifically failing and things like that, that would be more. Again, I don't like the government coming in heavy handed. That's really where I stand. I would love to say, hey, we're voluntary, we're asking people, we're encouraging you. And I understand there's not fines associated with that and things like that, but that's the issue that I have on that. And then also knowing, you know, how many days is it that we're hitting this where we're going over that peak demand? It's understand if it's a day or so, but it's, you know, when I look here at 2020, 2021, 2022, we still hit 2.5, 2.2, 2.2, all with watering restrictions. So obviously, the watering restrictions didn't keep us from hitting those peak demands. Now, if it's we hit it five times instead of 50 times, okay. But if it's we hit it five times instead of six times, again, when we're coming in and saying this, the government, we're stepping in and saying you can't use this. And I understand the cost portion of that. That's the main reason from my perspective, when we did this last round with the watering rates, is that we pushed it to where your price was based more on what you use, rather than just the fact that you have this huge base rate based on the fact that you're attached to the system. Now it's about you use the water, you're paying for the water. So if someone decides they're going to fill up a swimming pool in June, they're going to have a really big bill. And that's the way it should be because you're putting the strain on the system, you're causing our bill to North Pooter to go higher. So I believe that we've put things in place with the watering rates that'll help with that. So again, if we were to look at something, it's voluntary, asking people to come aside and help us. Again, I've been saying it for four years and that's fine, but we haven't done it. We've just said, this is the way it's going to be. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Definitely. I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, putting the restrictions in place. I like to err on the side of caution. And I want to make sure we can provide clean water and not have any plant breakdowns that may put the town in jeopardy. And until the new plants are up and running, I think it's wise to continue doing these water restrictions. Thank you for all the good information. And that's all that I have to say. So thank you. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 13-2024, a resolution establishing hours and days of outdoor watering.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, make it a roll call, please. Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
With a vote of six in favor and one against, the motion carries and the resolution is approved. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read the title for item E2.
Community Services Center Grant Contract.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, the town administrator, will present on this item. Ms. Garcia.
Thank you. So the agreement before used to provide a grant to the Community Services Center specifically to help fund the installation of an elevator in the facility. Mark Gabbert, who serves as the chair for the Community Service Center Board, provided a presentation to the Board of Trustees at the March 12th meeting. And staff was directed to provide an agreement for a $10,000 grant for the elevator installation. The grant period, as you will notice in your, in the in the document, is established as April 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025. The agreement requires a financial and a program report on January 1 and July 1 during the grant period and within 30 days of the grant expiration date. The Board of Trustees budgeted $30,000 in their board discretionary funds for projects of this nature. The Wellington Resource, the Wellington Senior Resource Center may request an additional $10,000 for their senior ride program, but a formal request has not been received yet. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this item? Trusty Gator.
Thank you for bringing this forward. The only question that I have, I like having the financials. I'd love that that's in there that they're going to report back. Can we, it doesn't need to be in the contract, but we could just, could we just ask them to also provide a report at the end of the period?
So that would be the within 30 days of the grant expiration.
Oh, okay. So that would cover.
So that's that covers their final, final report.
I just want to make sure we have on the end. That was the only question I had. I'll comment when we come back to that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Teets.
I'm excited for this to happen for the Community Services Center. The only issue I had was is Ms. Garcia, you said that it was specifically for the ADA elevator. But in the contract, it does not state that. In the contract, it gives two options. It says, design and engineering work on the S, the CSC, ensuring that facilities will be accessible to all, including those with physical and mobility disabilities. And construction of the CSC facility to include installation of appropriate ramps, automatic door opening and elevators. We didn't agree to that. As a board, we discussed the ADA elevator. So I'd just like to make that adjustment when we do our motion, if that's possible.
I don't know cost of the elevator. My only thought is if, I don't know if elevators cost less than, if they're more than 10,000, then that's easy. Okay. But if there were other projects that the money could go towards in addition to that, I'm not opposed to that. But either way that we wanted, I know we did talk about it being specifically for an elevator. So that was my only thought.
Meanwhile, we're going to talk about that right now. I think it'd be wise to leave it open for maybe architectural or construction consultant stuff that would relate to that instead of just narrowing it so far down that it can't. You know, the scope of it would just kind of make it hard for them to even get the project to begin with. Maybe they weren't allowed to use that money also with a contractor or an architect or whatever the case may be to get that actual elevator up and going. That's my thought. But we can talk, we can talk about that more once we keep going. Do you have any further comments?
Just that they had submitted, they had shown the design plans and everything. So I didn't know additional design needed to go into it after the fact.
I don't know either. I just want to make sure that we leave that possibility open personally, but.
Got it. I'm still kind of stuck on the guaranteed elevator item. Sorry.
Fine, you're fine.
At least we know exactly what it's going for.
Thank you for coming. Trusty Wiegand.
I kind of agree with her as far as the elevator, but I understand your side too. And I think we do need to keep it open. You know, if there is extra money, I think we need, you know, make sure they report back, let us know how it's proceeding. I didn't think they were going to be breaking ground and telling I didn't think they were going to be breaking ground until first part of the year, coming here. And this is going to be, what, terminated at the end of this year?
2025.
2025, okay.
Have some time.
Good, thank you.
Protem?
Absolutely. Based on my professional experience of grant writing and receiving grant funds, I think that the way, that the scope of the grant and the anticipated activities are completely appropriate. So I support the way that it's written currently.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Yeah, I also support the way that it's written currently. I think maybe if we can have some kind of guarantee that there will be an elevator in the building, but certainly if there's money to go up and above and, you know, ramps and that sort of thing also included with, with that money, I'm hap, I'm happy to support that, so.
If it's a two-story building, it is required to have an elevator.
Trustee Daly?
I think the way it's written matches the sentiment that we had discussed. And given potentially, maybe they can get a grant for an elevator, so maybe that's why it's written that way. In case there's some cost sharing associated with what we do and maybe a grant that they would receive externally to be able to still utilize it for the same sentiment. So I do like how it's written.
And the intent, their intent is to use it for the elevator. And we kind of left it a little broad, just in case for that what-if situation. But as he even spoke at the meeting, the intent would be for the elevator. But there are other costs and things that come up related to construction and talking about design and things like that, that maybe this could be used for that.
Yep, that makes sense. And then the other thing I wanted to acknowledge, we talked about before, $10,000 is a large amount of money for the scope of this project, right? $5 million potentially. But what's more important is that we're putting the stamp of support of the Town of Wellington behind their project, which enables them to then take that standing and say, and do more fundraising and say, we are, you know, we're being promoted right now by Larimer County through their impact grant, the Town of Wellington, who wants to support us. And then that can turn into millions of dollars where their donors know that we're standing behind them. So I think that's why it's more important. So I, I just love that we're discussing this and, and considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I like the way it's worded. I mean, Mr. Gabbert, Coach Gabbert, trust his word. So I'll run with that. We'll hold this up for public comment.
Hi Karen Eifert, live in the Knowles. So $10,000 for an ADA elevator is a drop in the bucket. I'm so glad that we did it, but it's usually between 600, well, between $60,000 and anywhere upwards of $2,000, $3,000, $100,000. And then the more complicated ones that would rise up and like fold out for a wheelchair that's all completely folded in, the provided ramp and things, those can even be more. I've seen those go as much as $600,000. And that's usually on like a corporate building, but that has to happen. But I, I think maybe it would be smart of us for maybe Patty to get back in touch with, sorry, Mark? I don't remember.
Gabbert?
Gabbert. And see if that's the way he meant for it to be written or not. Cause he might want to recheck it and make sure he's not putting down something that's going to disqualify him from another type of grant. So just to be sure, that language is exactly what he was looking for, to still keep him open for those other grants. But our $10,000 donation is a drop in the bucket for the price of an ADA elevator. They're super expensive. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
So Mr. Gabbert did review this agreement before it was submitted in the Board of Trustee packet and did approve it. So he, he read through it and said, gave it his stamp of approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, somebody else is behind me.
It's me. Yes ma'am, I'm Lowry Moyer, Harrison Avenue. I just want to say thank you for putting your funds behind this project. I was here when Steve first brought it to the board and it goes a long way in providing resources for every member of this community and pushing us as Wellington just to being more equitable for all. So thank you.
Having no more further public comment. Any further comments from the board? Trustee Gator spoke of one?
Yes, so I just wanted to say I appreciate kind of what is being done here. I know I've been one of the ones who's raised concerns in the past about, I don't like when we're doing ongoing funding of 501(c)(3)'s. And what it was great when I had a chance to talk with Donna, who's helping with doing the fundraising on this. And she said, a lot of the grants that they're finding are like, we'll help fund the ongoing, but they don't want to fund the capital. And so for me, this has been something, we've had a lot of people who've come to the town and said, hey, we have concerns, we need these services and access to this here. And so I appreciate that they're coming saying, hey, we're not asking you to fund all of this. We're saying, hey, can you help us out with a little bit to get things going, to enable us to go do more? And that is one of the, so that way there's no inconsistency. I generally want us to focus on the things that we're doing. But this allows us to say, hey, residents have been asking us, provide these services. We don't have the resources to be able to do that. But by using this grant, we can help enable this other organization who's willing to step up and say, hey, we will provide those services that the town needs. And I like that because that frees us up to go do the other things that we need to do as the town. So I really appreciate how this has been brought forward. And I think this is a good use of us stepping in and saying, hey, we can help in this area.
Trustee Teets?
Well, if I have to agree to how it's written, I would rather have a vote of unanimous than creating issues and having one vote off just because it's not the exact wording that I would like it to say. So no, I am absolutely in support of this. I think it's awesome. I think we still have a long way to go when it comes to making sure that we're tending to mental health needs as well as community gathering spaces. But I think that this in general, luckily, we have signed the, a letter of support. So they already have that support saying the Town of Wellington is behind them. But this goes a little bit further in saying that we are understanding and investing. And it's very hard for me to argue with anything that is improving ADA accessibility here in town. So no, I'm grateful that it was brought to us and I'm hoping that it does grant a lot of assistance with what they are planning on doing, so.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand?
I kind of look at this as kind of bringing the community together. And I think we need to promote it as much as we can at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Protem?
Great project. Would you please hand me a tissue behind you?
Trustee Mason?
Super excited to stand behind this and very much luck to the Community Services Center going forward.
Trustee Daly? Perfect. Yep. Thank you very much. All for it. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Move to approve the Community Services Center Grant Contract.
I'll second.
Mr. Protem, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the contract is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Clerk, can you please read the title for item E3?
Resolution number 14-2024, Resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, Making Appointments to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. All right, Ethan, our town clerk, will present on this item? Or Mr. Moose, Ethan Moose, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Ethan Moose, your town clerk. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. This item, Resolution 14-2024, reflects the board's desire to appoint members to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. After receiving applications for appointments to these two commissions, two applicants were interviewed and recommended for appointment to the Planning Commission. And then one applicant was interviewed and recommended for appointment to the Board of Adjustments. This resolution would memorialize that decision. And specifically, it would appoint Mr. Bert McCaffrey to the Planning Commission for a term beginning in April of 2024 and ending in 2028. Mr. Tim Whitehouse to the Planning Commission for a term beginning in April 2024 and ending, ending in April 2028. And Mr. Wyatt Knutson to the Board of Adjustment as a voting member, beginning a term in April 2024 and ending in April 2028. Very happy to take any questions you might have for me on this item.
Thank you. Start with Trustee Teets, and she's the one requested the, taking up consent?
I don't have questions, I just have a comment before I vote.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from anybody else? No? Okay. At this point, we will open it up for public comment. No public comment? Okay. Oh. Sneaky.
Lowry Moyer, Harrison Avenue, clearly I've missed it up here. I just wanted to say that all you have to do is listen to Mr. Whitehouse speak. He is a Yoda of all things Wellington, water and planning alike, and has the historical knowledge, as does Mr. McCafferty. I can say as a fellow planning commissioner, to really lend valuable knowledge to the board. So I would highly encourage their appointments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Cholay, Homestretch Drive, again. I would reiterate everything that my fellow planning commissioner, Mr. Moyer, said about both Bert McCaffrey and Tim Whitehouse. They lend a depth of knowledge and historical knowledge that is important in this town, especially as we're looking at people that want to come in and bring businesses or, you know, different site plans or zoning questions. Often they have historical knowledge that is very informative to the rest of us that maybe don't have quite that history. In addition, I just would also say, I firmly and fully support Wyatt Knutson being appointed, appointed to the Board of Adjustments. He too has a wide depth of knowledge, both historically and on all of the things that we're always discussing. And all three of those men are amazing leaders in this community. And as our fellow planning commissioner, I fully support their appointment.
Thank you.
Hi Karen Eifert, I live in the Knowles. Not the, not the planning board, what's the other position?
Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, and his name is Wyatt Knutson. My concern with Wyatt Knutson is he benefits financially with his business going on here in town through lots of contracts that he has here. And also, I want to take this time to say, I went to Rebecca Kenny's political thing. Can't get in trouble for saying that, can I? I went to her political thing, but what I was, I had a great time and it was a wonderful thing, but I did not appreciate being approached by a drunken Mr. Whitehouse and harassed. And I think that those types of characters, the way he's treating other people in public while he's drunk, should be considered before he's appointed to a board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, hearing no further public comment. Bring it back to the board. And I guess there's. Yep, Trustee Daly?
I, I wanted to say thank you to our amazing volunteers that spend so much time on all of our volunteer boards. The Planning Commission is essential for our community, Board of Adjustment is absolutely too. And these amazing people do not get paid for those positions yet. They, they hold the burden of a lot of items and developments that are occurring in our town. They are amazing. I agree with everything that you guys said about, I've, I've served with all three of them as planning commissioners. Um, Tim Whitehouse, Knutson, and Bert. And they are incredibly professional individuals, very knowledgeable, amazing expertise. They, we, the Town of Wellington owes so much to these people who spend all this time and the other planning commissioners here tonight. Just selfless volunteers. And my hope is, as, as our board, that we encourage that and we don't make it hard or discourage people from wanting to volunteer and be part of this town. Cause as soon as we do that, we lose those amazing volunteers who are running our town. As soon as we start pointing fingers and looking at all these things, rather than acknowledging their amazing sacrifices and contributions, we are doing the town a disservice. We need to celebrate our volunteers and love them. And thank you so much to those people who applied, who are over, overqualified, and we owe them so much. So thank you to the volunteers.
Thank you. Trustee Teets, did you want to comment now or during the? Did you want to? Yes, go for it.
Okay, so one of the reasons this was pulled off was because we have had people come and speak at our meetings. I have had people reach out to me privately with concerns about placements on our board and possible conflicts of interest of certain placements that we have on our board. It's not one specific person. So I, what I'd like to do is just read the scope of coverage for conflicts of interest. And the term used in the article is hereby defined as follows. Financial interest means any interest which shall yield directly or indirectly a monetary or other material benefit to the official or employee or to any other person employing or retaining the services of the official or employee. Then it goes on to list substantial interest means any situation, including without limitation, a financial or personal interest in the outcome of a decision in which, considering all of the circumstances, a reasonably prudent person observing this situation would expect a marked tendency to make a decision other than an objective one. In those instances where there is a disagreement pertaining to substantial interest, the Board of Trustees shall determine the matter with its decision being final. So that means that any conflict of interest should be coming to our board. Any conflict of interest, and our board would decide if that conflict of interest does in fact look at a recusal. The secondary option of that is to also file with the Secretary of State your conflict of interest, as is required in the state of Colorado. You file that conflict of interest directly with the state. You can do it online, you click the Secretary of State and it's the first listing you pull up on their website. It's actually written into code. It was in 2019 approved and stated that it had to happen. So, and I know that we have not been doing that as a town. And I'm calling this as my issue when I speak of conflict of interest. Any financial, our ordinance specifically states it. And the substantial interest of that comes to us as a board. So that is the only thing I'm pointing out, and it's just as far as an acknowledgement to state that I would like to see it appropriately handled moving forward from here on out. I don't have an appointment, a problem with the appointments. I just want to make sure that we are made notified of any conflicts of interest that do come and that all conflicts of interest are identified. That's it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Trustee Gator?
So I think the only thing I would say on that line, I think that this would be a good thing for us to review with all of our boards, is what conflict of interest, and I think the one thing that really stands out to me is if you go back up to the basis of why we have the Code of Ethics, it says the article is intended to supplement Colorado Constitution, state law, and constitutes the Code of Ethics governing the conduct of elected appointed officials and employees of the town with respect to real or apparent conflicts of interest. That, that's why we have the Code of Ethics and it's that whole thing of being above reproach. There might be something that, hey, legally it doesn't qualify as. And so I think it's good to go through that with all of our boards. So I think that's just a, something to be good for us to do. I think it's good for us to cover it, but I think it'd also be good for our volunteer boards, so that when we ask for conflict of interest, I know with most of my volunteer boards, we've, the four years I've served, I don't think we've ever sat down and actually covered what defines a conflict of interest, what does our town code say? So I think it'd be a wise thing to do.
Point of order, this is an item that's not related to the actionable item in front of us. And I think it, it's kind of deterring and being a negative connotation towards our volunteers. If there's a discussion about code of conduct or, or those kind of things, I would suggest that we bring those back as an actionable item. It's not part of this, this piece.
Thank you. There you have it, all uphold that point of order. I think it would be wise to bring forward it for a further discussion for sure, when the time comes. Mr. Clerk, or may I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution number 14-2024, Resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, Making Appointments to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments.
I second.
Mr. Clerk? May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
All right, at this time we move on to reports. Mr. Town Attorney, Dan Zepianza?
No updates at this time?
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Just one item, based on the conversation that we just had, the conflict of interest piece, that that is something we can ask Sam Light to address when he does his.
that is something we can ask Sam Light to address when he does his orientation, that first meeting with the, the board. So I will make sure that's on his radar to bring up and, and clarify and answer any questions you all might have. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All the staff communications were included in the packet. Are there any questions on those items from the board? No. Or reports? Trustee Daly?
Wellington Middle High School, their drama club performance is going to be on April thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth. So you can get your tickets and support them. A great group of kids who have been working a lot, a lot to, to get that going. So please support them next year. They're considering doing a musical and a play. So it's going to plan to extend as they get older kids, so please do that.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
All right, so had a couple of things I wanted to highlight. So just as a reminder to members of the public, our finance committee has two-year terms. It differs from all of our other boards. So basically every time there's a new Board of Trustees, they have the opportunity to appoint a new finance committee. So we've had a great group of people who've done a great job. So it'd encourage people to, if you have interest, would like to have a way to get involved with the finances and just reviewing and being a part of that process. Look for that. It'll be coming out over the next month or two. You should start seeing the applications available for that. So encourage you guys to apply for that. Also, wanted to just share with the board, had the opportunity to attend an HOA meeting last night. Had received a question from a resident, came to actually listen on that. There are several specific items, which I'll share with Ms. Garcia, yeah, Ms. Garcia, in regards to just questions people had about the town. Two things that came up that I did speak to, one was, is the town going to a one carrier service with Republic? And I told them what was told to us in the meeting. That's, there's been one conversations happened between, I believe, a couple of members and that's it. But there's no board direction on that. That's not something the board's supporting. So if anyone, that's what I said. And I told them what we had had in this meeting. And then the question that had been asked to me is, I guess in the past, the HOA had been looking at possibly doing a pool and making, making that larger and open up to the community. And I talked about trying to work with the town on that. And I had asked them if that was something that they were still looking into. That's not something they're looking into right now. So I just asked the question. And they said they're not in a place to look at that right now, which is made out, so if someone asks about that, that was, I was asking a question of them to say, is this something you guys are still looking at? If it was the case, I would have brought it back to the board and said, hey, we should look at this, but right now they're not in a position to do that. So in case someone says, I said this or that, I wanted you all to know exactly what I actually did say. And I think that's all I got.
Awesome, thank you. Trustee Teets?
Yes, I have two things. So I had the opportunity to meet a family, the Mretts, who started what's called the Wellington Welcome Wagon. So this is a husband and wife and daughter team that actually started sending welcome baskets to residents with the information about the, the area. So it's an opportunity for businesses also to get involved. So they will actually deliver these baskets with business information, community information, gathering connections, information about our board, all kinds of stuff like that, which I think is really cool. So that's something exciting for the community that everyone can get involved with if they choose to. The other thing that I wanted to speak to is, is I had the opportunity of attending the PROST board at their last meeting. I was able to attend via Zoom. And I love the conversations that they have and how attentive they are when it comes to how invested they are in the community with seeing all of the parks, trails and items be addressed. However, the one issue I did have in watching the video was a direct intent to just include one of our boards for a Fourth of July parade. And that was specifically the finance committee. They did not want to include them. And the sad thing is, is you can actually sit and watch this video and watch them talk negatively about the finance committee board and how they are not welcome. They don't want the target on their back. And Trustee Daly sat in that meeting and said nothing. There was no means to readdress. There was.
Can we continue? Is there any further?
This is my board report.
Okay, I, I would like us to not be attacking each other at the dais.
Sorry, I apologize. So I would just like to ask anybody that does sit on any of these committees that we are being the demonstration of what we say we are going to be. I would greatly appreciate that. That's all I have.
Trustee Wiegand?
I met with the lady and her daughter on the Welcome Wagon too. That was one of the first things I did when I moved out here. It's a great way for the community and businesses to connect each other. So I definitely encourage if you're doing business in town to talk to them.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Got something to read here?
Okay.
Exciting. Ladies and gentlemen, twelve years ago, I embarked on a journey that was fueled by a deep desire to improve the quality of life for my two young children. Their innocence and joy were my motivation and I dedicated myself to making a difference in our community. In the course of these years, we have spent countless hours in board meetings. I've seen the phases of determination and commitment and I have felt the weight of responsibility that comes with leadership. This experience has been instrumental in shaping my identity and understanding of myself. It has been a journey of self-discovery and I'm grateful for every minute. However, I must acknowledge that this journey has come at a cost. The precious time that I could have spent with my children has been sacrificed in the pursuit of a larger goal. As I grew older, I realized that I was missing out on their milestones, their growth and their development. I cannot afford to sacrifice any more of these invaluable moments with them. I want to take a moment to express my gratitude to my children. Their sacrifice has not gone unnoticed. They have given their mother the strength and determination to make Wellington a better place. For this, I am eternally grateful. Over the past twelve years, we've achieved many successes together. We face challenges, overcome obstacles and emerge stronger. I'm confident that I will be able to bring the lessons I've learned from this journey to my future endeavors. But in recent times, I have failed repeatedly to persuade this board and its enablers to do the right thing. And at this point, I refuse to give their endeavors in this regard any further hint of legitimacy by remaining. Therefore, I sit before you today to announce my resignation from the board. I want to make it clear that this decision is not a reflection of my lack of commitment or dedication. Instead, it is a testament to my unwavering belief in the principles of good leadership, kindness, compromise, and most importantly, listening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the board. It's been an honor and a privilege. Well, I want to give a round of applause to my two kids in the back who stopped us.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Daly?
Again, I just want to give a heartfelt thank you to our volunteers. We have amazing, amazing volunteers in the town of Wellington. The PROST board is incredibly engaged and they are such great volunteers. And they are very excited to have a parade filled up this year. And they plan to throw little balls at you guys that are marked with town of Wellington things. So very excited that they are taking the extra investment into our town to participate in that event.
Oh, I got my board report. Well, Mayor Pro Tem, it's been a pleasure and thank you for being my Mayor Pro Tem and, and helping me and being there when I had questions and conversation and the knowledge that you gave and were willing to share with me on a lot of interesting, different subjects was good. And your wealth of water knowledge will be missed and what you did for this town will never be forgotten. So thank you for, for serving as long as you did and the sacrifices you made to do so. Okay. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? I, I now adjourn, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, time being eight P M.